Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to Order. I would like to make a couple reminders on a couple items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence all your electronic devices. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight, and appreciate you joining us. In effort to have enough time from, to hear from the audience members, we ask, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to five minutes to allow us to hear from everyone that'd like to speak. At this time, we will go and consider the consent agenda. Denise, please read the items on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 1A is Planning Commission briefing of Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Item 1B, Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, November 6th, 2019. Item 2A, Petition 11328, 2019. Rezone from RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, located north of East 69th Street and west of South Sycamore Avenue. Item 2B, Petition 11337, 2019. Rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, located at 2012 East Russell Street. Item 2C, Petition 11428, 2019. Rezone from AG Agriculture District to RS Single Family Residential Suburban and Rec. Recreation Districts located at 1221 West 85th Street. Item 2D, Petition 11373, 2019. Alternative Site Plan for Request to Allow BMP Inside Buffery Yard and Allow Landscaping Units Outside of Buffery Yard, located at 1200 South Blauwelt Avenue. Item 2E, Petition 11342, 2019. Preliminary Subdivision Plan for The Woods Edition, located east of South Pinewood Avenue and south of West 85th Street. Item 3, Consent Agenda Approval.
Is there anyone from the audience that liked any of these items that were just read, pulled off the consent agenda? That you'd like to speak on? If not, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, Motion to Approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, the consent agenda passes. Denise, can you read the first item on the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, approval of the regular agenda, please, first.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, consent, or regular agenda passes.
Item 5A is Petition 11283, 2019. Rezone from RD to Town Home Residential Suburban District to O Office District, located at 2300 South Ronziak Avenue.
Good evening. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. The applicant for this rezoning has requested that this item be withdrawn.
We have to take action on that, right? Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the withdrawal of item 5A.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Any discussion? On the withdrawal? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, withdrawn. Denise, next item.
Item 5B, Petition 11263, 2019. Rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, LW Live Work, O Office, and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, RA3 Apartment Residen- Residential High Density, LW Live Work, S1 General Institutional, CN Conservation, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and C3 Commercial Community Districts, located at the northwest corner of East Madison Street and North Veterans Parkway.
The applicant here is Joel Dykstra, representing Golden Gateway LLC. It's located at the northwest corner of East Madison Street, and then the recently completed Veterans Parkway. The applicant is requesting to rezon roughly 162 acres. And zoning districts are relatively similar, what's existing and what is proposed. As we know, as we go farther along within these subdivisions, when they get down to the preliminary subdivision phase, then roads have to go in, and so some of these zoning districts need to switch around a little bit. The real major change is that S1 portion in the northern part of this subdivision, and that's for the future Brandon School that's looking to go there, and then a future city park. The, before this Brandon School District, I know there's some concerns. Before the Brandon School District would be allowed to go in there, and that's about five to 10 years out. This subdivision would need to have that secondary access, as you can see up here, to Veterans Parkway. That would be required as part of this. The proposed zoning generally meets the designation of that business park in the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan at the intersection of Madison and Veterans Parkway. The proposed rezoning plan does provide the necessary transitions from the proposed commercial uses along Madison and Veterans Parkway to the proposed multifamilies, you start going north, to the townhomes and twin homes, and then to the future single-family residential to the north. Finally, the proposed zoning, as I indicated before, is relatively similar to what was already existing. They're just kind of shifting some things around. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Any Commissioners, any questions for Jason? Thank you. Is the applicant here? You want to state your name and address for the record, and give us a little bit about what you're looking at doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I am Joel Dykstra. My address, 404 East 77th Street in Sioux Falls. The plan here is really in recognition of the completion of Veterans Parkway. If you could go to the slide, Jason, with the two side by sides, you can really see what happened is the existing zoning is kind of parallels the Veterans Parkway, and that isn't actually practical with what we're do- with the way things have turned out now. So we're using the pre-existing Powderhouse Road as access north and south through the middle. And we've also had our wetland studies and so forth, and so we've got to, we're going to maintain the green areas there where the drainage goes, and just leave, make them part of the development, so that actually helps the overall development plan. That, and so really, the changes have been as much in orientation and in recognition of the street plan. The existing zoning on the left didn't actually have a street plan or DEP associated with it, which is, which this plan does. And we believe that it allows for more orderly and development and uses.
Any questions for Joel? Thanks, Joel. Is there anyone from the audience that'd like to address this item? I know there's one gentleman that wanted to speak for a couple neighbors. Is there some other people they're going to want to speak to? Just want to make sure that.
Hi, my name's Neil Anderson, 1709 North Paddington Trail. This is my first time in this building and first time addressing any member of city government, so pleased to be here and have the opportunity. So, there's several members from our Canterbury Heights neighborhood here this evening, and many of them couldn't be here. It's church night. But we have some small concerns with this zoning, and we also have some concerns with the development plan that will be addressed later. But I'd like to get into the concerns that we have right now. But as I, as I start out, you know, I've only lived in the city limits for about two and a half years now. And when I went to build my house, like many of my neighbors and many of people who want to kind of foresee what the development, where they're going to build is going to look like in the future, we turn to the zoning that exists. And then you read up on the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Plan, and you try to get a sense of what could happen in the future. Because I have a friend who's been in development, and their advice to me years ago was, "Don't ever build a house in a development if you don't know what's going next door." I wanted to know what's going next door, much like my neighbors. And so, there's guidelines, and the city has done a very professional job of establishing guidelines on how to be able to predict what might happen in the future. And that's what we rely on. And Joel, I want to thank you for your cooperation and professionalism throughout this process. We've had community meetings, and we've had good discussions. And I also want to thank Director Eckhoff and Jason, who've been very facilitative at nights, on holiday nights, to help us out with this. Unfortunately, we're still at a disagreement, and that's what we need your help with. I'd also like to thank all of you for your voluntary participation in the capacity you're serving, because I think it's really generous, necessary, important, so thank you. As Joel pointed out, you know, the zoning on the right, our primary concern is that RA2. And the reason for that is, we did not anticipate that we would have apartments that close, thank you, Jason, to the existing zone residential space. And this is just pointing out the current continuous residential space, which is now going to have a school on the northern half, which we're fine with. The kids need a place to go to school. And so, you know, the proposed changes are bringing a medium-density multifamily where there was going to be residential homes. So Scott is four houses away from it, and I'm five houses away from it. And it's a nice area of town, so you envisioned that you'd have houses out there, and you'd look out, and the sun would rise, and it would hit your house, and you'd enjoy a sunny morning. One of 45-foot-tall, three-story apartment complexes, that's 10 acres in size, goes in that close, it starts to affect what you envisioned you were going to experience throughout, throughout your retirement years, because this is where I intend to live and die. So, that became the primary concern with this zoning, and it's a concern that's shared with all of my neighbors as well. So then, when you try to wage an argument on this, you go into that Shape Sioux Falls Plan, and I pulled out a few excerpts, and I know I don't need to read these to you, but I'd like to read them anyway, because you're very familiar with it. But it says, Bullet Number 1 says, "Limit the number and types of non-residential uses permitted in single-family residential areas in order to protect those areas from negative impacts of incompatible uses." So we'll have to get to what incompatible uses are. The next bullet is, "Do not allow rezonings unless land-use transitions are incorporated." So we'll have to talk about transitions. And then, "Establish height limitations in single-family residential areas that maintain a consistent height limit throughout the envelope." That makes a lot of sense to me. You don't have to worry about the skyscraper being built next door to your house. And then, we also dug into the ordinances a little bit. I won't cite the ordinance number, it's listed there, but, you know, the regulations establish districts where the single-family homes are provided maximum protection from intrusions, including higher-density residential uses, while still providing safe, attractive areas for apartments, townhouses, et cetera. And the Shape 2040 Plan indicates that transitions are key in the development. The next one is, "Regulations are intended to preserve and protect existing property uses and values against adverse or unharmonious adjacent uses." And we could have a long-drawn-out debate on both sides of whether or not our property values are going to be impacted by apartments being four houses away. And I don't want to get into that, but you could guess what side of the debate I'm on there. And lastly, "The district should transition from higher to lower compatibility districts in a way that maintains a neighborhood's context." This is how we decide what transitions make sense. It's a nice little matrix, and what I have circled there is the intersection of where residential would join apartment complexes. And it's a three. And five is ideal compatibility. Three is an incompatibility, stated to have potential conflict in the transition. So when we're deciding to build our homes, we could presume that the zoning regulations protect us from incompatible transitions of future developments, which was the assumption that was made. This is what, this is the picture in the Shape, on the website, that shows what should be getting built with the current zoning. We're a good team, Jason. This is what we're anticipating will be built. So, we're pro-development. We love our city. We love our neighborhood. We just want to do what's right, and we want to make Joel's life not difficult, but allow them to develop that part of the city. So we proposed some solutions, and we're still at disagreement. Option 1 was just to maintain the residential zoning, and that's not our preferred option. We don't think that makes sense for him. Option 2 was to change that art, that apartment zoning to twin home, because that would be compatible with the 2040 Shape Plan on transitions. It would still allow them to put multifamily in, but it wouldn't have the height concerns, and it wouldn't have the aesthetic impacts on sunrises and neighborhood appearances, et cetera. And I really respectfully, and on behalf of the neighbors that are present, respect your support to understand our concerns here. One thing I'd like to point out, that is very difficult to read here, but Jason, the staff report, you indicated that the future access would need access to Veterans Parkway, but in this staff report, it says Veterans Parkway or Powderhouse could be access. And I think we should establish the correct record there, because that's a completely different scenario if you use Powderhouse, gravel road, traveling a half-mile north versus cutting right over to Veterans Parkway. Just a point of correction there. And that's my testimony. I really do appreciate your time and consideration. This is where we decided to build our homes. You're very influential in the process. We feel like we have a good compromise for them. They're good people. We're in a disagreement. Welcome your support, and I would answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Scott Fitch, 1713 North Paddington Trail. Back to that second, that slide. So the question I have is twofold. Like I say, RA2, having that 45-foot apartment building right there is a major issue. And the other part that I don't understand is, the only exit where we're down at C2, C3, in between here, that's where the exit, where all these people are supposed to go, but yet, the west of RA2 there, RS, all those RS zones up there, they're all going to have to exit, the most logical thing, there'll be an exit all the way through there. That doesn't, to me, doesn't make any sense. Why doesn't that road run straight through? From, between RS and RA2, run straight through there? I don't know why it can't go just straight through there, so that's, that's the question I have. We've asked that before, of why. Because what the problem's going to be is, all these people are going to have to go west that way. So, that's my concern.
Any questions for Scott? Anyone else like to address this item?
I haven't necessarily planned on this, but I am definitely here to support our particular situation. My name is Carol McDaniel. I live on Paddington Trail. Now, you may not be clear where all of us are from.
Your full address, please.
1621 North Paddington Trail.
Thank you.
Paddington Trail is. There, okay? It's sort of the horseshoe thing. There, that's Paddington Trail. Now, you have to look really closely on, this map is one that actually was part of that first rezoning. You can see there are two accesses to Madison. There aren't on his current proposal. What we're looking at, and our biggest issue, is having another access to Madison. If you're from Brandon, and you're going to bring your child to that school up on the north end. Now, we're, first of all, you've got to get there, then how are you, are you going to go to work in Sioux Falls? Okay, now, the proposed school is, my understanding is up there on S1. Now, you brought your child to school there. How are you going to go to Sioux Falls to go to work? Okay, now, Paddington Trail is right there. Yes. No, no. No, okay, that's Paddington. Down. Yeah, that was the straight one, sorry. That's, that there is Paddington Trail. Now, it curves all the way around and ends up back to Tahoe, back to Dubuque, back to Madison. Now, that's a lot of curves. However, it, the, what we need to look at in this whole situation is joining those two developments together. Our current one, which is Canterbury Heights, and his proposal, which is right there where the RS is. Now, we have no access outside of our area right now, all the white, without going way to the west. Now, are all of those people in all of those houses and are delivering to the school going to come back to Powderhouse, make that jog? Which way are they going to go? That's our biggest question. We need to have a straight route down to where we would like, a straight route from that school straight to Madison. As it is, it's a very good probability we're going to see those, all of those vehicles coming right by my house, which this is the second time we've been here and had an issue, because the spot way up north of us was an issue also. And we did get some adjustments, but minor ones. The, planning needs to look at where one development is and the second one. Where do they marry? How do they marry? Putting that school up there and then worrying about it later is not going to be what's going to work. We need to have the accesses in this development on paper and be reality. Some of the pictures up there, last time I was here, it showed roads that were not there, because the developer had planned to put them, and they still are not there. We've been down that road. We need you to look at the routes and the roads that are, he's proposing and planning, and look at them, and do they make sense to the next development? To the next door one, which is right there. So if you'd please consider that.
Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Todd Miller, 1513 North Paddington Trail. Excuse me, I'll get farther back. Our whole contention has been, there's history here, as Carol mentioned. In 2014, there was a neighborhood that was proposed north of Canterbury Heights, went to the Planning Commission, and it was, it was shown as if roads were there and weren't there. In fact, the directions that were submitted to you folks were even, some of you obviously weren't here, but were, even the directions indicated a route that didn't exist. The roads don't exist. Marlow does not exist. Could turn it the other direction. The, the, the issue with this, with this whole section of land is, it's a tall, narrow section. There's Great Bear Nor- Great Bear is on the north, so there's no way to get out. On the, on the east, or west, excuse me, is a private road, so you can't get out there. So to me, this is equivalent of building a skyscraper on a toothpick. The shaded area right here is supposed to be Marlow, which the developer has never put in, which the final Phase 2 and 3 plans from the city indicated way back in 2006, signed off by the engineers, was to be pay, you know, Highline was supposed to be, was supposed to be paved all the way up, and, and Marlow is supposed to be put in. We don't have any way to move this traffic from the north down to the south. Now, Joel Dykstra is proposing a different piece of land, which he wants to not be influenced by the challenges that there are today, but if you're going to build next to neighbors, I think you have to address that. And in previous plans, it was acknowledged that you need to get from the north to the south. What we propose to him is if Rosemary would just continue on down to catch up with Highline, that would present an easy way for all of his traffic to flush down south to Madison Street. And he has rejected that. It wasn't, it's not convenient. I mean, he talked about, he talked about convenience. I understand business and a desire to make money. However, traffic flow and the citizens that are paying taxes should be considered as well. And I think primarily. There was a previous plan with Jason was involved, and he tells me it was, there were supposed to be, there were going to be two entrances, I think Carol pointed it out. You see, there were, there were roads that were going to go north to south, but it's not convenient to do that, because you're going through wetlands. I think that the citizens and the safety of the neighborhood should be considered before what's convenient or most profitable. There already was supposed to be Highline, that, a $2 million road that has been vacated by the city, which was supposed to be a collector's street going right up the middle, and to feed the traffic off of there. That's been eliminated, okay? Backdoor, whatever it would, whatever it was, it was eliminated. And, and I don't have a problem with that going away if the roads get built to go north and south and connect up and to feed the traffic. But there's no way to do that, and consequently, yes. I mean, the easy flow is to go across Paddington. They've made Paddington essentially a collector's street, except that it's very narrow. And that's not designed to be that. It's designed to be just to go around the outside. So I present to you is that I don't think that the Planning Commission is given a fair shot and a fair picture when they don't show that, you know what, that road really isn't there. That makes a huge difference. There is no commitment by the development that they're going to build Marlow, so we still don't have any way to go south out of our neighborhood other than a windy, growl road. That was a Band-Aid, because we brought up the other fact was that this city failed to have two entrances to our neighborhood, or even a fire escape. They denied that, they had a dirt road going out to Powderhouse, can call that our fire escape. So, it's frustrating that we're paying taxes for services that we aren't getting, and for safety issues that we're not getting. And we're asking you guys to, you guys and gals, to take a look at this and say, "Is it feasible to have a long, narrow piece of property and not have north-south traffic?" Everybody, talk to Jeff, talk to others, we're trying to look for resolution, then talk, "Oh, there's going to be, there's going to be access to the east." The problem is the traffic to the south, is to flush traffic out to the south. The people are going to want, as Carol mentioned, they're going to want to come south and, and west. Yes, some people will go back to Brandon, some people will go to Veterans Parkway. Yes, we get that. But if it's an elementary school, there's going to be a lot of people dropping their people off, their people off, or, and their kids off, and then just, and then winding through the neighborhood and not going through all these right and left angled, all these jagged deals, roads, is not the way that people are going to go. So, we ask for you to reconsider this proposal. I don't consider it to be planning. I don't, it, I know that a lot of times the guys say that you're zoning, that you're deciding zoning, but the title says Planning Commission, and I don't consider building a skyscraper on a toothpick planning. With all due respect, thank you.
Any questions for Todd? Thank you, Todd. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item?
Name is Craig D. Witt. Live at 1705 North Paddington Trail. I am up on the northern edge of Paddington. Built our dream home eight years ago, and on a quiet street with a pond in the back, and a place for our five children to live, grow up, and play. And I guess the biggest concern is just, again, as you've heard, the traffic. Everybody stated it previously, coming down Paddington Trail. Not what we expected going into it. And I have a, I feel for Joel, being in the situation, developing next to us, when part of this is our development's issue and our developers' issue. But I feel as, again, Planning Commission, that if you, we have no authority to get them to work together, but that's where the City Council and Planning comes in to help bring the two developments together, if you will, and make sure that it's done correctly for the safety of our residents and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Craig? Thanks, Craig. Anyone else in the audience?
Jeff Durner, 5505 East York Circle. My concerns are that we have unresolved issues with our existing development, as you've heard, and by allowing the proposal to go through, you're compounding a problem. I've lived on the east side in this area for 25 years. Four years ago, I built my dream house on York Circle. I too pay $12,000 a year in taxes, and I don't feel like I'm getting the city's value in allowing this type of development to go through. I'm very pro-development. When I built my house, I knew what was going in on Veterans Highway, what was proposed, the existing arrangement where we were gonna have some commercials, some multi, some apartment buildings, and that plan has changed, and it directly impacts the value of my house. I'm about four houses away from where that multi-story apartment complex is supposed to go, and I'm very opposed to that. I think it will definitely have a negative impact on the value of my property. The school, which I agree we need, will create a lot of traffic problems. Living on the east side, currently going by Annie Sullivan and Washington, we, we live with that traffic flow problem on a daily basis, trying to get westward into the city, and I don't wanna see another problem like that created in my neighborhood, especially when nothing has been put in out there. I would ask that you guys either come out, drive through, see what this actually looks like, because again, what was drawn or presented to you is not what's out there. We have gravel roads to get access for fire emergency. It's just, it is not what I expect from the city of Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Any questions for Jeff? Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else in the audience? Otherwise, we're gonna close public testimony. All right, so we're closing public testimony, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate at this time for either staff or the petitioner to come up and address some of the items that were brought by the neighbors?
Yep. Who would you?
All right, I'll try and go through some of them. They are correct that when the school goes in, they can get the access to Veterans Parkway, or they can pave Powder House all the way up to the north and get access to the, I think it's Maple up in the north, so those are the two options to bring traffic from the east down here without going through the neighborhood. One of the things is, they were, I think one of the questions was that these two developers aren't working together. I guess I disagree a little bit with that. This whole plan is based on the developers for Stone Arch Partners, which are currently, have the remaining lots in Canterbury. They're actually the ones that are gonna be running the sewer down Tahoe to get it over to Canterbury, so they can continue to construct some houses along Marlow. They're not gonna be able to get all of the houses along Marlow, all the way up to Paddington, where the existing street is, because they need to run another sewer line, and that's about seven to 10 years out. So that will hopefully help some of the issues. I know it's not gonna help all of them, but that will get them their secondary access onto Madison Street. Once that water and sewer is run, ran, then RMB and Joel will construct Tahoe, and then the Highline access point on Madison Avenue. Another one of the questions, I believe, was why isn't there two access points, or why doesn't the east street go all the way down to Madison? As we all know, the South Dakota Department of Transportation controls access line Veterans Parkway, where they restrict access points. You can't have an access on Madison that close to Veterans Parkway. The minimum has to be a 660, and usually they're looking at quarter miles, and to get any more than two accesses onto Madison Avenue, it won't happen. They like to limit the access, so it'll filter all the traffic to Highline to Madison, which in the future, when the traffic numbers get up there, that will be lighted inters, that will be the lighted intersection, where hopefully most traffic will go, and to try either get on Madison and go into Sioux Falls, or go east over to Veterans Parkway and kinda take the loop around. I'm trying to think of some of the, some of the other concerns. The RA2 portion, as we, as we know with the compatibility chart, yeah, it is a three compatibility. There are some incompatible, there could be some potential conflicts between that and single-family, that's stated in the ordinance, but that's also why that we've built in those buffer yards, to transition those apartment complexes to single-family. That's why they'll have that Level C buffer yard, which is a 30-foot setback. They gotta have a burb, they gotta have a fence, they have to have landscaping, so that's, that's a way to mitigate some of those conflicts between this RA2 portion and actually the four rows, or three rows of houses that, that this current developer will be putting in at some time. So I don't know if there's any other ones, or if you guys think of any other ones that I've missed.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions for Jason. The first one is, you talked about options that a potential school would have. What, what would they be required to do? That's my first question.
For, for the street access?
Yes.
So the school's seven to 10 years out. They are either required to put Paddington in all the way over to Veterans Parkway. You can see that kinda area that's outside of the existing zoning. That's not an area that's controlled by RMB, so that's one option. The other option is to take Six Mile all the way north, all the way up to Maple Street, and that would have to be paved, to filter that traffic, 'cause this is the very west side of the Brandon School District. If you go west, and there's a little bit of the Canterbury subdivision that, that kinda jig, jags around in there, that's part of Brandon, but the majority of everything west and south, that's all in the Sioux Falls School District. So I'm assuming the majority of the traffic's gonna be coming from the east and the, and the south. It shouldn't be as much from the west unless some people are open enrolling to, to Brandon School District.
Second question is, would you comment on the difference in density between what's existing with zoning and what's proposed?
Sure, let me, just a sec. So if you look on the plan on the left, you've got RA3 and Live Work for a majority of that, and those allow buildings of unlimited size, so those can be apartment complexes, as, as we heard, skyscrapers. So the, the zoning districts on the west is more dense than the one they're proposing. They are taking portions of the RS, as you can see, that's where the school's going, and then they are taking a portion of the RS and putting RA2 in there, which is the three-story and 48 units per building. But overall, I would say that the plan has more or similar single-family, and it's probably a little bit less dense than, than what it was before. It's, it's pretty similar. I can't say either way, but.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Jason, when you look at Paddington and as it connects to Highway 100, what would you classify that part of Paddington to be? Is, is that a collector, a sub-collector? Has any of that discussion happened?
Yep, great question. Paddington will be a collector. The existing Paddington within the Canterbury Heights neighborhood is also classified, classified as a collector. Collectors that were constructed previous, you know, this one was probably done in 2006, somewhere in there. They didn't have the same standards as we do now. I believe it's a 66-foot right-of-way. Now collector streets in Sioux Falls are 80-foot right-aways, so the Paddington within this development will be an 80-foot right-of-way. The existing Paddington is a 66-foot right-of-way. So that'll be a collector. Tahoe, which is on the south portion of this, that's another collector street, that'll hopefully filter all the traffic within this development to the lighted intersection on Madison Street, and so that's the other collector within the area.
Okay, Mr. Chair. And so as I understand what you're talking about, Jason, what you're kind of indicating with that being a collector street is that having the school and the multifamily adjacent to a collector street is always good planning to do that. Now, the transition, you know, that can be debated, but as far as using a collector street for those higher traffic uses, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, typically, that's what we see. If you can see some other schools, elementary schools, one that comes to mind is Rosa Parks over there on East 26th Street. To the north of that, they've constructed what's called Dublin Square, and that's zoned similarly. It's kind of those, they're classified as apartments, but they're, they look more like townhomes, and that's a similar instance to what probably will go here. This is a, a little bit smaller of a parcel than, than those over there, but.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? Otherwise, I will look for Commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Item 5B for the purposes of discussion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second discussion?
There's been a comment from the public that, as this was being reviewed and as the testimonies coming in, that, you know, planning versus just zoning and land use, well, they, they're, they're more integrated than more would probably like to think in this, from the testimony that was, that was heard. So to me, when you see a, a plan for a community development, especially one with a longer-term vision for, for a school, single-family being developed next to single-family makes a lot of sense. Transitioning towards a major highway for some more dense residential still makes sense. You put the commercial down in the southeast corner of this, right on that highway junction, it all flows naturally in my mind. So some changes were made from the original plan, but I'm not seeing a real quantum shift, if you will, that which would cause the, you know, the consternation that's, that's been reported, or that's been testified here, going from single-family to apartments, well, that was in the original plan. You have to kinda re, redesign the, the conservation district because of the water. That makes sense. You can't put a commercial development in a wetland. It doesn't work. So I'm seeing a lot of things that make sense here. So I'm, I can appreciate the neighbors. You, you wanted a view to the east, you didn't want it to change. If you don't own it, you're not really entitled to control exactly how that's gonna look. That's that piece, but when it comes to the actual plan, this makes a lot of sense.
Any other discussion?
I'm kind of in alignment with Commissioner Johnson about, you know, like I said, when I, when I learned that, that new Paddington was going to be a little bit wider, more of a collector, proper street, that helps me to understand that traffic is clearly going to be focused on getting to Highway 100 as this is developed. Nothing is perfect as it's happening, because things don't always happen in exactly the order we'd all like it. But as far as advanced planning and thinking about the, what makes sense for the community, I think this does make a lot of sense. Yes, those are a little bit abrupt transitions between that multifamily and the single-family across the street. The same thing happened in my own neighborhood, and in certain occasions, that does happen, because you can't always have a, a perfect transition with just one separation at a time. Developments just don't happen quite that smoothly sometimes. So I think all in all, this does a pretty good job of trying to address all of those concerns in my mind.
Any other discussion? All right, then we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same time? All right, passes. Denise, next item.
Item 5C. Petition 11230, 2019 preliminary subdivision plan for Golden Gateway located at the northwest corner of East Madison Street and North Veterans Parkway.
So this is a preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with the rezoning that we just heard. This is really the plan that we use to get this subdivision to work with the subdivisions next to it. I think one of the comments was that we need to plan these subdivisions to work with the existing ones. This is the part of the process, or the first step in the subdivision process to do that. I just wanted to highlight a couple of quick things here. I misspoke a little bit before, it's, it's Powder House, not Six Mile, so I apologize. So the plan would be Paddington, Powder House, Tahoe, and then Highline on this map. Those will all be the collectors. Those will all be the streets that the local traffic goes on to get over to Madison or to Veterans Parkway. And as we know with a preliminary subdivision plan, it's preliminary. It's to give us a preliminary idea of the entire development, lot and block layout, preliminary ideas where the streets are gonna go. As we've seen, some of these developments, 162 acres, you may not know what it's gonna look like 10 years down the line, and that's why the next step in the, in the development phase is our development engineering plans. And you actually take the 162 acres and maybe break it out into five 30-acre pieces, or you kinda do it in phases, and there's, then they're separate, 'cause we, we've heard quite a bit from the neighbors, well, where did Highline go? Why is it gone? Well, that was part of an old preliminary plan, and as part of this new one, that's why Joel's coming back, 'cause he's actually moved the access for Highline about 300 feet to the east. So that's really what kicks in then, why he has to come back through and do a revised preliminary subdivision plan. Otherwise, you're allowed to change your, your internal streets around, 'cause things change. Any kind of external factors, streets that change from adjacent neighbors, neighborhoods, and things like that, that's where we have to come back for another public hearing. And that's why Joel's back today, because of that access onto Madison Avenue, instead of putting it, piggybacking on Canterbury and Golden Gateway. He's moved it to the east, and it's all gonna be on his specific property. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. We kinda went through most of the stuff already with the rezoning, so I won't relive that, but.
Thanks, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Thank you. Anyone in the, or the applicant here to state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Joel Dykstra, 404 E77th Street, Sioux Falls. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out about this development plan. The, the issue of the access on Madison Street, and I wish it was Madison Avenue, 'cause the real estate's worth more on Madison Avenue. This is, but the, the Madison Street there, that, that is a signalized intersection. It's the right distance from Veterans Parkway. The previous map had two curb cuts, but one of those was a right-in, right-out, so, and wouldn't have had, wouldn't have had a signal at all. So this is, and obviously, the way this is designed, the school up there at the, on the north end, the main access is gonna be down Powder House Road to Tahoe and out. That's your, that's your quickest way. The fact that the Paddington is a 66-foot right-of-way in the existing area will be just another reason people don't wanna go there. I mean, they're not gonna, that's, that's a tighter access, and they're not gonna choose, that's not their easiest way through, out of this neighborhood. They're gonna come down Powder House Road and around to Highline and out by where the, where the signals are. The other things, I think, I'm, you know, this is the, the new era of the recently passed ordinance about buffers and, and so on, so we're actually talking about that, that little triangle of RA2 there, which is, which we're stepping down from the RA3, which is in the existing plan, or was in the previous plan. But the RA2 will have setbacks and buffer yards, and, you know, they're not, it's not gonna be curb-to-curb apartment buildings. So if you have any questions about any of the details of the development plan, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions for Joel? Thank you, Joel. Anyone from the audience like to address this item? You come up and state your name and address for the record?
Neil Anderson, 1709 North Paddington Trail. Some of this will seem redundant, because my intention was to talk about road traffic on the preliminary development plan versus the zoning plan. So Canterbury Heights Development, highlighted in the, the red rectangle, owned by Stone Arch, represented by Van Buskirk, a very reputable developer in town. 15 years old, geographically bound, and large one-acre executive kinda home development. So we have opposition to this preliminary development plan. Canterbury Heights Development was designed with north-south corridor access. It was 110-foot wide corridor street. And Counselor Irvin, you commented on your, the attractive nature of Paddington, and the new Paddington being wider, but the fact it connects with the old Paddington, which is 60 feet wide, suggests we're making Paddington a corridor. And now... And now those five little kids are on a curbed street with cars parked on the sides of them. And when people come around and can't see the children because of the curve and the cars, the decisions you are making are affecting the safety of children. And there's nothing built yet. All you have to do is change some lines on a drawing and show some leadership and stand up for what's right. These arguments are not baseless. These arguments are based in the shape twenty forty plan and the city ordinances. And there's a difference in interpretation in some cases. And in some cases, there's not a difference in interpretation. You're just ignoring the guideline. And I'm struggling with the logic. Existing residents in Canterbury Heights, this is what they were sold for a development. The horseshoe pattern of Paddington is a local street. It was never intended to be a collector's street. Why would you make a collector's street a semicircle sixty feet wide? It is an engineering formula for someone getting hurt. Next slide, please. So I've drawn in the this is a satellite view that shows Paddington or the the Canterbury Heights addition. The red line, there's a bunch of houses up north there. You know, the only paved path that they have to get out of the development is that red arduous path down a sixty-foot-wide street with kids playing on the sidewalk, with balls rolling into the street. I've seen it with my own eyes. If I sound passionate, it's because I love kids. The the yellow line is High Line. That's what the prior real estate brochure said was gonna be built. That is a very logical way to remove traffic from this area. And it is on the boundary of Stone Arch and Golden Gateway. The blue line there is a gravel, muddy, snow-packed road that I've personally gone in the ditch on, and I'm a good driver. It's not a safe road. So to argue there's two ways in and out of those houses up north with four hundred thousand dollar lots despite the value of the house, they're gonna drive down Paddington with their cars, because they don't want gravel and dust and mud, and they don't want to go in the ditch. So Jason referenced the engineering development plan, and this is just a little copy of the engineering development plan for our development. It shows High Line. That's phase two's development plan. High Line Avenue is on it. Next page, please. This is phase three of the development plan, which shows High Line Avenue, highlighted with the red line. Everything that was planned and developed and engineered said High Line is gonna be a road to get cars in and out of this development, and it planned for an adjacent development that would need cars to exit safely as well, safely. So the city of Sioux Falls, Golden Gateway and Stone Arch, decided to vacate High Line Avenue. I don't know when. I don't know what gave them the authority, because there's no communication with the Canterbury residents. There was no approval from the city council. It had a very dramatic impact on traffic for where we live today and the future traffic we're talking about, where the roads aren't built yet that we could get right if we do this right, and we defer this today and get people to talk about how to do it, how to do it right. So this is an ordinance that talks about how to do an amendment to a development plan. Amendments to an approved preliminary subdivision plan may be requested by the developer or amendments to a preliminary plan shall consist of external impacts, including changes in major collector streets. Now, High Line was an external feature on the boundary of two developments, and it was changed without any administrative official amendments completed. So if there was an attorney in the room, I would ask them to rule on the legal basis for whether or not High Line even was vacated legally. Notwithstanding the fact, I understand why they wanted to vacate it, because that would have put a road in the front yard and the backyard of every lot along High Line, and that would not have been favorable for the developer, and I understand the logic. What failed to take place is communicate with us and come up with an alternative plan on north-south access that did not distract from the value of their property, but allowed a north-south access. It is not beyond imagination to understand why Joel and Van Busker got together and said, hey, these lots aren't worth anything with a road on the front and the back. You run me a water line. We'll agree with the city to get rid of the road. We won't tell anybody, and we'll all make more money. Next slide, please. This is another drawing, and what's highlighted there in red basically shows the agreement between the city, Stone Arch, and Golden Gateway to get rid of High Line. So again, it's subject to interpretation on whether or not that could have been done without council approval, but the ordinance I read indicated external features and corridor traffic changes. Both of those apply on a boundary of two developments. Next slide, please. Primary concern is traffic and safety. Current plans don't allow for proper corridor access. With all due respect, Commissioner Irvin, Paddington should not be, never should be a corridor sixty feet wide with a semicircle with cars parked on the sides to exit traffic from an elementary school. Unsafe, irresponsible decision to make. Golden Gateway was party to the decision to vacate, and as a result, because they participated in the decision to vacate High Line, it should not be allowed. They should not be allowed to make the argument that it is not their problem and that it is Stone Arch's problem, because they were party in creating the problem. Future traffic will use local streets in Canterbury. We know that. There have not been traffic studies performed. I'm not a traffic authority. And the ordinances suggest that traffic studies should be done, unless the engineering department says they don't have to be done. This is an opportunity to defer this for the traffic study to be performed, so that could there could be a counterargument to the safety concern. Paddington is the only paved street access to Canterbury and developments to the north. Golden Gateway proposed plan doesn't have a north-south access. Please defer this, cause force them to get together and build a road. Canterbury clients or citizens have safety concerns already stated. Approval of this is not consistent with ordinances. It's not consistent with the shape twenty forty plan, which, based on the prior decision made by this decision-making body, I now question whether or not those are highly influential in the decisions made. Next slide, please. This is the collector's street ordinance. Provisions should be made for a collector's street every quarter mile. There should be a street connecting adjacent subdivisions at intervals not less than a quarter mile. On the next slide, you'll see that I took the liberty of highlighting with a purple star, quarter-mile increments. This is what this is the density of collector's streets per the ordinance that should exist to get traffic in and out. So it already is limited by the number of collector's streets ordinances suggest, because of the geographical boundaries, making it all the more important to put an appropriate north-south traffic road in, like was originally planned and engineered, and removed without any notice to the community. Path forward, we're asking you to defer this. Do the right thing. I sound passionate about this, because I'm passionate about this. And please, don't hold that against us. But the neighbors in this community have been up here many times trying to get a road built, so they don't have to drive on gravel and mud and snow to get in and out of their community in the middle of Sioux Falls. As you develop a city appropriately, you don't jump over a problem and create and exacerbate the problem with an and an exterior boundary to that. You do it in order, so that everything kind of folds out nicely and safely. We respectfully request your support to defer this, to allow an appropriate plan for traffic to be developed between the two developers. We're happy to work with them. And we've offered suggestions. Next slide, please. As was pointed out earlier, that little yellow line right there, Joel, with all due respect, all you have to do is have your engineering firm draw that road in, and none of us are standing here today. That's all it takes for the developer to build the appropriate road for safe access into and out of a community. It might be a difficult decision to make, and it might cost a little money. But the hard decisions sometimes are the right decisions, and when the hard decision is the right decision, you do the right thing.
If you want to wrap up in the next twenty seconds.
So appreciate your support. Please do the right thing. And uh available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item on new testimony?
Yes, Craig DeWitt, seventeen oh five North Paddington Trail. Just one real quick brief comment, and that's just in the previous testimony, we heard the words probably and hopefully, and that's concerning to me. We've been in this development now, where are we, fifteen years in this development? We've heard the words probably and hopefully before. And a previous neighborhood meeting we had, uh which Joel and Jason were kind enough to join us for, we heard from city employees saying, you guys got screwed. The city has changed ordinances because of how we got screwed, because of probablys and hopefullys. And so I would just ask you to think about using those terms and um maybe having some things written, so that we're not hoping. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Craig? Thanks, Greg. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Marshall Lindquist from sixteen twenty North Paddington Trail. And I I don't know if you're appointed or elected, but I would expect that your um job duties here are to protect the people and the property. And the most important people that I am begging you to protect are the children in our neighborhood. I'm a grandmother. I don't have children living at my home, but there are a lot of children in this neighborhood, and they need you. They need your support. You need to protect the children. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Any questions for Marshall? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item?
Ron McDaniel, sixteen twenty-one North Paddington. I'm passionate about my area. I've lived there eleven years. I have stopped traffic for the speed that they drive on Paddington Trail. And I don't like doing it. When the street is empty, they just race through our neighborhood. When there's cars parked on the street, they have to slow down. So what your gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, are telling us, we need to park cars on the street to slow the traffic. You have a ninety-foot road and bring it to a sixty-foot road. What do we think is going to happen? We have to be realistic and use good common sense and be passionate about what we're thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions for Ron? Thank you, Ron. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? You state your name and address for the record, please.
Todd Miller, fifteen thirteen North Paddington. And I apologize, some of the other stuff I brought up before was addressing really the 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 sub the plan for the neighborhood. But um a couple of things to add is that not only, you know, we got told that, well, you know what, High Line Avenue was never platted. However, the brochures that were used to market the neighborhood say thus, this is a plat map outlined outlines Canterbury Heights and Canterbury Estates, which is the northern part of it. And other things that we hear from the city is that, oh, gosh, they can change things on preliminary plans. I have a copy of the engineer signing off on the final plans for phase two and phase three, which states, High Line Avenue needs to be paved by the applicant for the entire segment. High Line Avenue doesn't even exist. Um there might be a stub for it, they say. But I guess the question I have for Jason is if Joel Dykstra has to get approval to move High Line Avenue, when has Stone Arch actually gotten approval to move it? Because it was originally gonna be in Stone Arch Partners neighborhood. Where's that approval? I'd like to see that. When we addressed this with Michael Cooper about this final phase document, which was attached to, I have the documents from phase two and phase three, he said this was a suggestion. So if signatures on final plans are suggestions, who represents the citizens of Sioux Falls? It may not be practical for Joel Dykstra and his group to put Rosemary down to connect it up to High Line. But that is the only solution. When we talk about Paddington Trail, that's a logical, great street, you think, um for for them to travel on? Of course it is. It's a collector's street. Unless you have a way to flush people south, they're gonna keep going on the same street that they're on, and it's which narrows and curves, as already been stated. And they're gonna get exit right on on out onto Dubuque, which has already got hundreds and hundreds of vehicles that are going out that exit. The neighborhood, Nielsen Construction Neighborhood, um south of Madison Street, their only exit, and if I'm not mistaken, they have one exit, and they only they only have one exit, and there's fifty houses in that neighborhood, which is against code violation. I could be wrong about that. But those people, only way they can get out is going to Dubuque and their and their and their Brandon School District. So if I'm there, I'm gonna go straight up Dubuque and get onto Paddington and take a nice little route out to Paddington to get to that those schools. I just asked that we it may not be practical, but the two million-dollar High Line Road has mysteriously been vacated, and which both developers have been relieved of those expenses. I suggest that they could use that money to build Rosemary to take traffic flow to flush it south. That's what this our neighborhood needs. That's what that neighborhood needs, is to flush traffic south. To suggest that people are gonna all they're all gonna go um east and then go south and and then go west and then go south and then go west. I don't see that happening. Ask people on Archer Drive near Annie Sullivan how how much people like to make turns. They like to go the most direct route. And there's been a a big problem there as well. And we want that not to be a neighborhood. We want to give you folks the opportunity to stop this in its tracks and not stop it. We want this development. We ultimately removed our our objection to the northern development of a hundred acres of property because we're pro-development in good faith that we were going to have a solution to get the traffic out, and we were going to get a gravel road straight out to High Line, and it turned out it ended up being a big convoluted loop as well and a lousy road as it as it is. So we're not anti-development, but we are pro-proper infrastructure, and we do not see that happening here. It's got to be not just what's practical for developer, but what's practical for traffic flow. And yes, developers bring in revenue, but this ultimately, we're the ones paying the sales tax, the and the the property taxes. So somebody needs to look out for us. I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Commissioners, any questions for Todd? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to address this item? All right, we'll close public testimony. And there was a couple. Charlotte, I didn't know if you want to come up and talk about the vacated road, or if Jason did?
All right, excuse me. The word vacated is not the correct term for what High Line, what happened to High Line. A vacated road does need city council approval. To vacate a road, it has to be platted. High Line Avenue was never platted. It was shown on development engineering plan and preliminary subdivision plan. It was never platted, so therefore, it's never been a street. So to remove it, you just show it gone on your next development engineering plan. Just like they can take any one of these streets here on their next development, as long as it's not an external factor. So it it something that externally goes to the outside of your development. So if High Line's gone, it can't it's an internal Joel's, excuse me, Joel's preliminary subdivision plan, he came in front of you guys to revise his preliminary subdivision plan because he moved High Line, because it was an external factor. So Stone Arch, we could have made Stone Arch do it, however you want to do it, one one way or the other. One of them had to come in front of you again and the city council, because they met a major amendment criteria within the preliminary subdivision plan that they moved an external factor of their subdivision by moving High Line from where it connected to Madison Street. So either Stone Arch could have done it, or Joel could have done it. Joel was doing a rezoning, so why not do the whole development at one time and do the preliminary subdivision plan? So in staff's opinion, they
So in staff's opinion, they are meeting the criteria of how you change an external road in a subdivision. You go through the preliminary subdivision process again and you show where that new road is going to connect to Madison. So on that aspect, that's why Highline's not there anymore. It was never platted, it was never vacated, it doesn't need city council approval. So I don't, is there, was there any other questions that we had from this? I'm not going to debate which way people go. My personally, I would never go through their neighborhood to get, to get a, it, it's a similar argument to if you live close to 229. Are you going to jump on 229 and go around the city faster? Or are you going to go through neighborhoods to go somewhere? You're probably going to jump on 229. People that are coming here are probably going to jump on Veterans Parkway, Highway 100 because it's quicker. That's usually how things go. I'm not saying everybody's going to do that. That's how I would personally do it. And that's usually what we see. But I can't tell, tell the neighbors and tell you guys that nobody's going through their neighborhood. I mean, because that just would be false. But typically, we see them try and get on the faster arterial streets. And if you're going to go into Sioux Falls, you're going to go on Veterans Parkway, you're going to go down to Dolly Farm or you're, you're going to loop around the whole city. That's usually what you see. And I think that's probably it unless somebody else had another question.
Mr. Chairman, Jason, I'm just curious, do you know, is there been any traffic studies done in this area?
Good question, Aaron. There was a traffic study done as part of the entire Madison and Veterans Parkway development. So it was all done with the state and the city did a traffic study there. And I, if Shannon was here, she would know all the details on that. I think it was done for this entire area. That's why this applicant wasn't specifically required to do a traffic study because there's already one, one done for this intersection. That's where we get those access points set. And that's one of the reasons why they are moving the Highline access to where the lighted intersection is going to be.
Mr. Chair, Jason, you know, as we talk about a preliminary development plan like this is, what's, how often do those change as the development of this continues and extra details are determined? And, you know, some of the flow of driveways and streets within kind of these individual developments? How often do those things kind of get tweaked as it goes along?
Well, I would say some of the internal factors can change just depending on demand. And if, you know, down the lines, he wants to rezone something or, or something would come in there, you get some, maybe some internal streets that get removed or maybe another cul-de-sac. Or, you know, if this development takes 20 years to completely develop, if they get to a development engineering phase, you know, 20 years down the line, our, our specific standards may have changed where they need to maybe update part of this and do another road or make a road wider. Typically, you guys know, we don't see too many preliminary subdivision plans come back for, before you guys. Maybe one every two years. So, so typically the external factors of it don't change. Those roads that are connected to the other subdivisions and the roads that are connected to the arterials, those typically stay the same. This, this one obviously is moving, so that's why they're coming back. But you see changes. I mean, that's why he's doing 162 acres and it could take 15 years to finish this entire development. And markets change and things change throughout it. But, but that's, this is the first phase. This is just to say, we've got the water sewer, we got connections, we've got those, those different factors. And then you go to your development engineering, you go to your construction plans or you're constructing streets and things. And then you actually plat. And that's where you're going to plat streets and then they become streets. And then the only way to vacate them is, is specifically through a public hearing process.
Mr. Chair, so as you do that, Jason, and say one of those internal factors like the street of where Highline is placed as on this plan is continued north to connect as the citizen talked about, that type of an adjustment may happen in the future. Is that a possibility?
You're saying north to connect to Paddington that's going over to Veterans Parkway? Or all the way north up to?
The one that's Highline in the adjusted location? If that went straight north as the citizen talked about, that could very well happen as this development gets flushed out.
They absolutely could do that. And they could show that street going straight north if they wanted to. And they could eliminate it without a public hearing either. So that, that absolutely could happen. Maybe that all develops as single family and they need to put another street in there. They want to put it, put another street in there. They would be allowed to do that as long as they're not specifically moving Highline on Madison Avenue. They could, they could add a street, you know, the two streets that there are, that are cul-de-sac maybe. Why, hey, we want to cul-de-sac a different one and have another one go through. They could do that as, as part of it without coming back for a public hearing process, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have a question for Jason. You commented earlier about some improvements that would be happening in the Canterbury development in conjunction with this Golden Acre development?
Well, hopefully as working with Stone Arch Partners and running that sewer line on Tahoe, then they'd be able to construct some additional lots on, on the Marlowe. And then Tahoe would be connected to this. And then Joel is constructing this street with the access onto Madison. That's, I, was the plan to, to start next year, to get the sewer lines in and start constructing that street.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you. Any other questions for anyone else? Otherwise, I'll look for commission action.
Mr. Chair, I was wondering if I could talk to the applicant?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just had a question about Rosemary extending that through. I guess we've heard the opposition about it. I just wanted to hear kind of the developer side of not extend it through or?
Well, it, that is an internal option, I guess. I, with, with us, for, we're, we're looking at the preservation of the wetlands. We're looking at the, the saving some natural topography in there and other things. I mean, it's not, if you were to take that road through, you got to have a bridge or a, you know, I mean, but I don't know what kind of drainage culverts, how big that would have to be. But I mean, that study would have to be figured out. I mean, you could be actually creating bigger problems. Today, the natural drainage goes that way. We'd like to stay with natural as much as we can. You look all over town where we've, where we've preserved, where the city had, had planning has, has preserved the natural areas for wildlife or, you know, it's full of grasses and so forth. I'm thinking of the area around western, north of 85th Street. There's a really big area there that looks great. It's a great place for, people like to have houses along there and look at it and that kind of stuff. We, we're, the idea would be to stay on Powderhouse Road, which already crosses that, so that, that, that roadway is already built, it's already there. And we can stay with, with the topography we already have. The other thing to remember there is that there's a gas pipeline that runs on the east side of Powderhouse Road. And so there's, there's no changing that topography one way or the other. So you don't really have that option. So we're, we're, it's part of the city's drainage plan, those two green areas on either side of Veterans Parkway. Those actually have been acquired by the city and are part of this, part of a constructed detention and retention pond that the city put in over the last couple of years. So that's, that's gotta, you know, you just can't stop that water. That's got to go there. And so that's, we're trying to, to stay with the curvature of the earth and the natural topography as much as possible.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions for Joel? Thank you. Look for commission action.
I move to approve item 5C for the, for discussion.
Second.
So have a motion and a second discussion?
Well, I guess for the neighbors, thank you for coming out and discussing your concerns. I too lived on a Collector Street in my former house when my children were little, one block from a major school and 10 blocks from another school. And the roads were a lot narrower because I was living downtown. So although regardless of what happens with this particular subdivision, I would encourage you as neighborhoods to stick together and problem solve just as you have been. So for our, for our neighborhood, as well as many other neighborhoods that have come before this commission, that this, this type of, these type of issues fortunately or unfortunately bring neighbors together to problem solve, et cetera. And so especially as that school comes up and someone said, you know, we're concerned about our children, stay concerned about your children. And so I would encourage you to work with the city traffic engineering. They have a really great, it's a mayor-appointed committee. It's called Safe Routes to Schools. They look at engineering of streets. They look at enforcement, the police officers are there. If you have people that are truly going 40, 45 miles an hour on a 20 mile per hour street, you need to tell the police officer so they can start enforcing. You need to, we need to look at, are there appropriate crosswalks? Have the children been, have, have your students? And we worked with schools to make sure that people understood how to, the students knew how to use the crosswalks. We've increased signage, did walkability assessments and bicycle assessments. And so those are things that neighborhoods and neighborhood associations can do to work with the city to make their, make their neighborhood safer for their kids. And I would, regardless of where the streets are going, I would encourage you to do that. And if I could do that 15 years ago for my kids that were three, five and seven at the time, you can do that in 2019 as well. So all that being said, I do support this item and will vote in favor.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, as I look at it, you know, I see where Highline is placed. It seems like it's as close to the Highway 100 as it can be, which I think is a lot of what drove this placement. I think that's the major thing that's changed in this, this plan. And I, I would definitely encourage Joel and his group to consider that connector street. I think that might be good. But as you're designing things, you can't just say this is the way it's got to be because there's, there's always other factors that enter into every decision. Being a designer as I am, there's always times where you have to say, is that the best thing overall for the neighborhood, for the community, for the development, for the existing neighbors and the future neighbors? We always have to consider a lot of factors. And so I would encourage Joel and his group to really take a close look at that and encourage them to really consider that. It seems like that would be a good solution as we just preliminarily look at it. But I would trust the design professionals to come up with the best possible solution. I'd also encourage the city traffic to look again at this. I know they've already reviewed this. They gave us our feedback that they were comfortable with this going forward as shown. But I would encourage them to also take a look at that. And the citizens, you're welcome to reach out to traffic and tell them your concerns too. So as they do their review as things advance, and this will take years to happen. It's not going to all happen tomorrow either. But I'd encourage you to continue to engage those folks with the city. We all try to listen, but we also try to balance just a lot of different opinions and make the best decision for the community, which is always where our heart is. But I will be supporting this because I think that overall this is in the right direction.
Any other discussion? All right, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Passes. Denise, next item.
Item six is public input on non-agenda items.
See here, at this time, we will allow anyone from the public to address the commission on non-agenda items. You're allowed up to five minutes. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to address the commission? Not seeing anyone? I will look for adjournment.
Second. Just a second. I wanted to make a quick announcement. Our meeting in January is a little bit odd. So I wanted to make sure that we kind of let you guys know. And if anybody's watching at home, with the holiday, our meeting in January is actually going to be on Thursday, January 9th. So it's a little bit of an odd date. So I just wanted to get it out there now and hopefully people remember. And you guys can all come, so.
Should get it on your calendars. Thanks, Jason. All right, I'll look for adjournment.
You got a first and a second?
You got first and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same time or same sign? All right, we adjourn. Thank you, Sioux Falls.